You're taking on H3.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, H3.
Jim, what is your?
I don't know. Somebody want to do a hot lap looking for it? Give me 30 seconds.
I'll go first.
Thank you, Christian. Did you see him? Okay. Uh, sorry. We didn't see him.
We're doing that.
Okay, very good. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, H3 is at item dealing with Board Rules and Procedures. Okay. H3 is at item dealing with Board Rules and Procedures, and as you can tell from your packet, I have presented to you what I think is, we're getting closer, I guess the question is, is are we at the point where we like what we see or not? And so, I tried to make the changes as faithfully as I could based on comments received at our last board meeting. You can see the first resolution, Blesch, is the one without changes shown. The second packet is with the changes shown, and again, the third item is the existing resolution. And the fourth item is a Can We Help package that I received in my office. It wasn't handed over to me, it was handed over to the office on the 28th is when it was received. Anyways, there's a number of proposed changes there. Those were not incorporated into the Board Packet. I already prepared the Board Packet at that point and did not have the luxury of being able to go back and incorporate any changes, but nevertheless, I tried to make the changes that you had all suggested in our last meeting on this issue. And so, I guess I'm open to any questions or comments or however you'd like to see.
Question by the board, to the council.
I guess the question I have is, is Can We Help, if you have delivered to your office on some of the, you have a chance to pull it out.
I've looked at it, yes, sir.
And I would state that, I think, it did refuse public comment, because I remember calling on Mrs. Spencer, she comes to the podium, she's going to give the comments, she had a lot to go over, and I said, if it's going to take a long period of time, you must submit the board a printout, which she did, so she was not refused public comment. I have a true statement. Any other, excuse me, any questions on exposed ordinance, I have to go in.
It's not an ordinance, it's a resolution.
Really? Thank you for the correction.
Well, there's a big difference.
There is a huge difference, a huge difference. I guess nobody had any concern. I think we're here, aren't we?
I think we're, we're good.
Yeah. Everybody happy?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion?
There was one, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There was one point in particular that Mr. Chapman and I had an exchange on, and I don't mean that in a negative way, I just mean that it evolved over time, and that was in the conflicts of interest and provision, and that relate to if a board member is conflicted, how they might then also...
Well, yeah, my concern was, is that the standard has changed a lot in the last two to five years in terms of what the board members expected. It used to be you just disqualified yourself and you sat there in your chair and didn't participate, and you abstained on the vote, and then they had it so that you had to leave the bench, but oftentimes you sat in the audience, and then here, just in probably the last year or two, they've gotten to the point where they want you to leave the room so you can't sit there in the audience and make faces and give signals, do whatever else I guess you're accused of doing to try to influence the remaining board members who are dealing with the issue. But that kind of runs counter to if you're disqualified because it's an item that you have, you know, it's like your property or whatever, you, we've had board members go to, you know, disqualify themselves, sit in the audience and go to the podium and testify, you know, on their own behalf on matters of direct interest to them, not indirect but direct. And so, you know, I don't know how the, how you would word it, but I think what we should have in there is reflecting whatever is the latest standards of the, I would say, the, you know, the FPPC people who kind of regulate your government conduct, because it seems like it changes all the time, it's constantly evolving or moving. So, how do you quantify that and put that in language other than to say that based on, because we go to these ethics trainings, and that's where they talk about what you're supposed to do and not do, and in the last couple go rounds, they focused on, you've got to leave the room, you know. I mean, like, more recently for me, because I have done business and do business with the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce is here, so I can't stay in the room while you guys are dealing with issues of concern or dealing with the Chamber, so I have to leave and step out. So, that's kind of what the guidance is that they give you at the ethics training. Not that I have a vested interest in that particular subject or item.
So, the manner in which I chose to deal with that, Mr. Supervisor, is because it does appear that there may be some evolution of the way the political reform act is dealing with that issue over time, and yes, while we could put in that provision of the board rules, the law as it exists now, which really would be like printing paragraphs and subchapters and sections and the like, the way I chose to deal with it is that, you know, on the premise that this board procedures resolution might continue in existence in its current form after the rule might change another time, is that I simply, I back up just a little bit and without referencing specific section...
You're on page, page eight.
I am on page eight. I highlighted the issue is what I did, without referring to particular section.
Long term.
Yeah, bottom of section seven, it says, "While there is some authority," which can be found in the Political Reform Act, "which permits a conflicted board member to address the board of supervisors on the issue, it's incumbent on the individual board member to correctly apprise themselves to what degree they're permitted to do so." And that would give room, I think, for possible changes, and then it's incumbent on the individual board member, if they're going to walk that razor's knife edge, however you want to view that, they've got to educate themselves.
That's how I would understand it, yeah.
Correct, because the next sentence points out that the activity should be exercised with caution to reduce the likelihood of any violation of the Political Reform Act by a board member, but also because it could create a perception of impropriety on this board as a whole, and that's the balance to strike, in my view. And so, I think it's incumbent on the individual board member, if they're, if they're obliged by the PRA to conflict out and leave the room, if they want to take the extra step and come to the dais to make a public comment on the issue, they need to make sure they're within the bounds of the law, and it's on them. But it's on them because they're exposed, the individual board members exposed, the FPPC, but it also, to a certain degree, they have an obligation to the FPP as a whole as a member of this board not to conduct themselves in a way that perhaps paints you with a brush of their, you know, blazing past rule they're not supposed to. I don't know if I explained it.
No, I think you have, and the context I put in is, I mean, it hasn't been that many years ago when Jack Hanson, the surveyor, and of course, he was very active and involved in a lot of the ag-related issues and groundwater, and groundwater management would be one of the issues that would be of great concern to that community, sat on a number of statewide boards and committees and, you know, involved in discussions at a much higher level than even here, and yet when he had, you know, he would, when necessarily disqualify himself, but when he had, you know, his ranch or his landhold in the basin that was there that was being discussed, you know, he couldn't obviously, because of the conflict, be able to sit on it as a board member, but he sat in the audience and testified at the podium in regards to his vested interest in that issue, and that was, you know, at that time accepted, but whether that would be accepted today or not under the new standards, I guess, would remain to be seen. And I think that's the issue you need to try to address, and I think you've done that, and maybe you probably should put the razor blades and sharp edges back in there to kind of, and that was a good analogy to how to do it, because you could be in the right, you know, in terms of depending on your interests of saving the zoning or something that relates to your property, you ought to be able to be there to, you know, address the issues and concerns from you and not be precluded, because you have to also be a member of the board. And that's, those are the kind of little sticky wickets that exist out there that, you know, you have to have some ready, but I think Mr. Chairman Bob did a good job, at least, setting it up, puts the bonus on the board member to be attuned to what's happening with the state law.
Okay, any more questions?
I've got one more question. Bob, on page six...
Can you get there a final? Yes, sir.
I wonder that they sent that agenda, you say items, maybe to leave it.
You know, I have that word circled as well as a possible word change. It could be removed or withdrawn, and that would have equal value.
Right, because the way I take it, it's completely removed and never to be seen.
I get that. That's the one item I had circled on in my proposed draft, after having gone back.
Yeah, because we don't...
Yes.
Because you want to be able to act on it.
Yes.
We pulled up the consent calendar for...
Just like yesterday, you know.
Yeah.
You know, yes, that word is, that's a carryover, as I understand it, from the existing resolution. I'm not, you're right, a word change is an order. I think removed or withdrawn could suffice. If you read the next sentence, if I recall correctly, it does sort of imply that you're going to put it in another part of the same agenda later in that meeting, but I don't want to rely on multiple sentences to get a meaning and really correctly pick the right word from the beginning. Sir?
Remove would be better than any, I guess.
That's funny, that's what's in it.
Okay, any more? Any more? Mr. Public, Ms. Spencer.
Oh, I have to, thank you. Actually, it's a different one.
Actually, it is so totally different, I did all the work for you. Can We Help gave a summary of the changes that needed to be made in this document. The letter you have before you to address to Mr. Eden and Mr. Burns, it is important to the, to the board and the community, stressing the community, to have a document that can stand up in court and not be used against the county for willingly approving rules that are not in compliance with current laws, current laws, excuse me. The rules of procedures revisions directly affect the public and should be as complete and accurate as possible, and Can We Help is confident that the intent of the, of the board supervisors is not to ignore the laws or discriminate on any level. The county council's versions, revisions are replete with grammar, structural formatting, and clarity errors, in some instance even violates the sections of Ralph and Brown Act. Can We Help would like to respectfully submit the following revised document that has corrected the items that the county council has missed. You can, I mean, the document is complete now. Given your animosity towards me, if you could set that aside a minute, this is a good, solid document, it corrects everything the county council has missed. It's an old document, hasn't been revised that often, and so, formatting, he missed a lot of formatting, he missed a lot of very scary language that should have been changed years ago. So, you can just take this and put it in the box back there, and, or you can read it responsibly and see that these changes are needed. They're, they fix all the problems with the documents. It took a long time to take what the summary we gave you, which was ignored, and that's okay, we gave it to him late, but we did, redid the whole document implementing those, those omissions and errors. So, do with what you want to, it's a good, complete document now. The changes are in yellow. I hope you honestly take time to look at it and compare it with what Mr. Burns has submitted. It just needed more time and consideration on that very old document. So, do, I hope you read it, because it's a good document now.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in the public, would you take, I don't know?
Melody Brawley, Director, Health and Social Services, and I'm actually kind of speaking on my own here and as an employee of the county and as a government wok for a long time. I just wanted to speak to Code of Conduct, number 10, Think the Best. I interpreted that to mean something that I hear a lot in social services, which is assume positive intent. All of you, all of you, each of us is here, we have a purpose to be here, and I think it's fairly accurate to say that all of us really want the best for the county, for the people we serve, for our programs, whatever our purpose is. And if you approach any conversation with that thought in mind, that the person you're talking to with really intends the very best toward whatever the discussion is, it makes the conversation more about a difference in ideas rather than something we all need to argue and fight over. And I would just like to see, assume positive intent really is a little clearer than think the best.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, in response to that, I think where that comes from is off that choose ability thing that was promoted.
It says think the best.
And so, I think this was designed to mirror, because the board, when they were approached by the county superintendent of schools and the county school folks that promoted that across the platform for all public venues, that, and that's what was the origin of that. But I was concerned, though, in number 12, in the version Mrs. Spencer just gave us, she, it says, "Don't spec L," so it's not, I think it's supposed to be speak, but that must be a title. But anyway, it comes from that document there. But I think what you're suggesting, you know, in terms of maybe putting that, embodying that spirit in there, maybe in that early part there as a part of the preamble or something of how we, you know, want to try to be progressive rather than regressive in our behaviors.
Assuming positive intent would get you a long way toward agreement as opposed to starting from totally...
You obviously enjoyed that, that master's little syllable of it.
It was more than one.
Good, good for you. And notice it's right below refrain from idle complaints. I was stuck on the top of the proposed corrections, which says, instead of rescinding Resolution 12-039, I mean, I didn't get past the open paragraph, it says rescind, R-E-C-E-N-D-U-N-G, so I'm not sure what that would mean for the existing resolution.
Anybody else have any comments? Seeing that with pleasure, the board, the chairman entering a motion, unless you have changes to make.
With the word remove, it's most certainly.
Yeah.
Change, substitute, remove, virtually, yeah.
We've been working on this for a long time, trying to...
There's no...
It should be number 051.
Pardon me?
051. Is there a 051? I move we've passed Resolution 12-15-0-51. I don't think I've repeated that.
As in, that's okay.
Okay.
As in, then...
As revised.
As revised.
As revised.
We have a motion, a second, a discussion, and a board. Any comments we thought I'd worry about? Now, sir, come to the board.
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Cantel?
Aye.
Supervisor Hammond?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pata?
Aye. Let's see if we're doing G4. Got the other long landfill types?
Yeah, Chairman, I'm going to leave the room, I have a property for a water right that we can do in this property.
God, boy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this, Leslie must have come in for public comment. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this item comes on the agenda, basically looking for direction from, I set out in a basically a one-plus-page letter to you dated August 25, detailing what I think is a little bit of history, at least as far as I've become involved in it. I did speak with one supervisor since this issue has arisen and gotten a lot of background on it, and I'm appreciative of that proposition. This is, this relates to Bass Hill and Hurlong Landfills, really Bass Hill landfill. As you all know, we are in a JPA, Joint Powers Authority with the city to facilitate solid waste management activities in the county. And we have that Bass Hill landfill, it's, there's two parcels out there that are really of note for this discussion. There's a 40-acre parcel, that is owned by the county of Lassen, and currently, if I understand it right, it's leased to the JPA. And then there's 160-acre parcel that's owned by BLM, and that is also currently leased to the JPA. And it is upon those two parcels that the Hur, excuse me, not the Hurlong, but the Bass Hill landfill activities occur, and all of them, I mean, as you all, you've all been out to the dump, I'm sure, and, and it is quite in operation. So, the JPA or LRSWMA, lots of acronyms here, Tom Valentino and company, and there's a Joint Powers Authority Board, a couple of you sit on it, has made an application for land patent to the BLM to, and you should know, we have Ken Cullen here today in our audience, he is the field supervisor?
Field manager.
Field manager, thank you very much, with the local office, the Lake Office, I'm, I'm not telling you anything you don't know.
BLM.
BLM, sorry. And the, the application by Mr. Valentino was to the BLM for land patent of the 160-acre parcel to, so that the, the JPA could take title to that. There is provision in United States Code and Code of Federal Regulation for federal government essentially to convey title to certain entities, and, and the purpose that the JPA wanted that property is spelled out fairly plainly in my letter to you, that they might then trade a piece of that property, if they take title to it, with Cal Fish and Wildlife, who has another nearby parcel, so that the JPA can increase its buffer zones, if you will, around the ongoing, around the ongoing dump operations, so that they can meet their obligations under their solid waste integrated management plan. That's a long-range view, I think, of things. So, application was made to BLM. BLM, essentially, their response was that the preference is from the federal government for the county to be the entity that title is conveyed to and, and not the JPA, apparently, and I've, you know, learned along the way, learned that in terms of the Code of Federal Regulations, and there are certain entities that are on the approved list of qualified applicants for land patents, and generally speaking, they are, what are defined as political subdivisions. Political subdivisions are, you know, generally counties, municipalities, or, and then I think the language comes in, other political subdivisions. Generally speaking, though, I think the preferred recipients of land title...
If you, if you study the federal bills and the federal process, they, they like to work with the largest local unit possible, and there's a hierarchy there, and generally, you know, the political subdivisions of the state are counties, municipal corporations that are created by the people, they also are subdivisions of the state, but they're not ones created by the state. And the feds would just assume, it's part of that federal-state relationship, they would just assume deal with the state or some defined entity of the state. JPAs and those kind of entities are really, they're basically partnership agreements between those various units, so as a freestanding, and we kind of ran into that dealing with the, the JPA for the pool authority, you know, when it goes out to do their own financing and stuff like that, they don't have the same standing that a city or a county. And the third entity that actually in the hierarchy for the federal, that especially with BLM, I believe, from my experience of dealing with them, you got, they want to deal with counties when counties are available, or they'll deal with cities as a municipal corporation as a, as an alternative, or they'll deal with Indian tribes, you know, tribal authorities. Those are the three primary entities. When Sierra Army Depot is in the downsizing mode, and the Department of Army was going through the BRAC process, it, it's not that ultimately a JPA or some subordinate organization may ultimately wind up with the asset, you know, but when it came to disposal, they, they really, you know, they dealt with the county. The county is the one that they see as being the one responsible for giving up the assets, and obviously, they had to take into consideration tribal issues. The city, you know, had a maybe vested interest because of jobs and providing the municipal type services, even if they're from afar, but primarily, the Department of Army wanted to talk to the county, they wanted to talk to the, the tribal authorities, and outside of that, they didn't want to talk to anybody else. And that's why, like with Amity Field, why we became a player in that as kind of the exchange lever. And when this issue came up at the Solid Waste Board, Tom and I both sit on it, you know, I mean, we quizzed Mr. Valentino, yeah, it's, yeah, as a JPA, we could go to BLM, and I'm sure they could figure out a way to do it directly to the, the JPA, but that kind of goes against the grain of the process they have. They, you know, their preference is to deal with the county and or the city or both. And when it comes down to it, really, the JPA is, is basically an extension of the county. I mean, if it wasn't for the fact that the prison population was added to the city back in the 90s, mid 90s, when they annexed the prison, that we saw the city population and the county population being even, up to that point, the work being done by the Solid Waste Authority was being done by the county, it was an integral part of the county operation, Public Works had it, and it was the State Solid Waste Board and the rules and regulations that they put forth for managing solid waste in the state. When we reached that tipping point with the city and the county having basically 50/50, they were the ones that came in and more or less said that we want the city involved in handling the waste as much as the carriage. So, that's what caused the formation of the Solid Waste Authority, and, and they took over the operation. But in essence, if there wasn't a Solid Waste Authority, this would be something that would, today would be upstairs in the hands of, of Public Works being responsible for, and this board would be doing that. So, the idea of this indemnification, if we're like avoiding whatever sort of inherent responsibilities there, we aren't, because it's just kind of like an arms length extended, I mean, they're an extension of our authority. So, what I, my suggestion was, is that instead of going to go through and force them, you know, BLM to go through a process that could be time-consuming to vet out this other organization, is that the county take the lead and get the patent, and I think part of the property that we had out there for the solid waste, well, all the original property was obtained by the county, by lease or whatever. And then we've basically delegated that to the, to the joint powers for the solid waste, and that's what would happen here. We take responsibility for this patent, and then we would basically either transfer it or lease it to the JPA, but in essence, what happens there, we're responsible for it, irrespective.
Took you a long time to get to my question.
So, why can't the county just take it over and do short sale and go right to the JPA?
Well, because the only reason, and the reason...
And then we've basically delegated that to the, to the joint powers for the solid waste, and that's what would happen here. We take responsibility for this patent, and then we would basically either transfer it or lease it to the JPA. But in essence, what happens there, we're responsible for it, irrespective.
Took you a long time to get to my question.
So, why can't the county just take it over and do a short sale and go right to the JPA?
Because the only reason, and the reason that I hiccoughed on this was because of the indemnification provision.
Yeah.
That's why I balked, and if you want me to balk at an indemnification provision on a land, you, you want me to do that.
He does, he does, and he called me into his office, and I gave him the 45-minute version of that 5-minute.
You wouldn't have already paid him a lot of money.
So, 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 a couple of things. One is, is my perception of it initially was, was I'm willing to bet they're wanting to get rid of it as bad as the JPA needs it.
They're leasing, not, not necessarily, but.
I don't know.
Shannon, do you have anything you want to make on this, where?
No, I, you know, it's ultimately going to end up in a solicitor's hands if we have to go through that process, and, and, you know, we're pretty close to moving this on. And basically, it comes back to, you know, we could have the same answer from the solicitor, it will go to the county. I mean, the outcome.
I, I did get it, I have an update on that for you, Mr. Cullen. I did get an email communication from Joe Paulson, I want to say it was Friday midday or later. She indicated that the solicitor's office has declined to accept that request of formal opinion, and that tentative opinion espoused by some member of the staff previously will be incorporated. And that is essentially that, no, we're not going to go to a JPA, we're going to go to...
And, you know, and, and two months ago, or three months ago, when we had the conversation at the Solid Waste Board, we had the same conversation.
Yeah.
Mr. Valentino was the one that kind of wanted to deal directly with BLM.
Yep.
And not, and we kept saying that, that the system's not going to work that way, and if you want to expedite it, you ought to, you got, the JPA needs to go to the county, have the county adopt the thing, and take the lead, and effectuate the acquisition, and then they'll sort it out.
So, here's where my silly legal analysis caused me to hiccup, and that was that you have a JPA that's composed of two member entities, a city and a county, both of whom are on the list of entities that everyone agrees that the federal government doesn't have individually any real problem dealing with, but when they combine together to form a hybrid entity, there's a problem. And so, that was my initial kind of, whoa, why, why? I, I was just asking myself the question, why is it difficult to convey title to them individually, but when they join together to run a dump, it's a problem?
Well, there's, there's a difference. The, the city as a responsible entity doesn't serve the greater good, I mean, the greater area, they only serve the city folks. So, the city is not required to provide county services, but counties also provide services to cities. So, the, the county is the bigger pie or pot, and that's why in this particular sense, the county would be the only one that would be logical for BLM to be dealing with, rather than maybe dealing with the city as an alternative.
In, in, in my view, if I were in the position of the federal government, and I had some choice as to who to convey title to, I would probably pick the county as well, as the county probably has the best resources to deal with any allegations that come from a land.
Unless, unless you're in San Francisco, where the city and the county are one of the same.
Fair enough.
City residents are county residents, but not, county residents aren't necessarily city residents, because you have your unincorporated areas, and they're not city residents.
Right.
So, that's the reason why the county, that's why the feds, whether it's the Army or BLM or whoever, in the federal-state model, why they choose to default to and work with, whenever possible, the largest unit at the local level, which is counties.
And so, it was agendized today to seek direction from you?
Have you received direction?
Well, the direction that I'm, I'm seeking is really set out on, on the second page. Do we want to hold out and try and, you know, as for lack of a better way to describe it, force the issue with BLM conveying title to the JPA? That'll take a lot longer, but I think there's at least a thin argument that it would insulate the county to some degree. I know there's a counterargument to that.
Yeah.
Or, or the other side of that is, is do we want to take the bit in our teeth and indicate?
The, the JPA is nothing more than a, than a, not even responsible anyway. Yeah, we're, there was no JPA, it's us anyway, and they, we use them as, as a kind of a first shield, but if there's anything that needs to be addressed, the city and the county has to back up what they do. So, to say, to try to think that we're kind of shop, soft-shooting it off the stage, and we don't have any, we don't, we're, the target's on us.
So, 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 because of the manner in which I agendized this, I agendized this as receive report to provide direction to staff, I did not agendize it in a way where I asked you for your signature on the indemnification provision. I proposed to agendize that for next Tuesday.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest that the chair of direct counsel bring this back so that the district can act to be able to lead in this agency and decide the indemnification agreement.
That would be your direction.
Understood. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Take care of it. We need to expedite it.
Be on next Tuesday.
And I think for the benefit.
And we also should thank BLM for their cooperation.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. For the benefit of, for the benefit of the board, and the purpose of the acquisition of this, of this particular parcel, that allow for the reconfiguration of the way the landfill operates, so that the monitoring wells that we have to have in place can be on a wider perimeter footprint, because right now, where the monitoring mills are on the property line, and the way the landfill has basically built right up on top of it, doesn't give us the kind of buffer we need, and it starts creating a whole host of other problems that would have to be addressed. But by creating this buffer that we've acquired by this acquisition, allows us to operate that so that the state wouldn't be causing us a lot of problems.
Okay. Before we move on, did anybody in public have anything you want to add to this conversation? King looked quiet and happy.
Just a real quick, the folks at BLM have been a treat to work with, and I appreciate Joe Paulson's.
They're normal, they are.
Been delightful.
And talking, having talked with Mr. Valentino in the last, a week or so since our last, a couple of weeks ago, when our last solid waste meeting was held, he's, he's okay with this too.
Yes.
At first, he, he really kind of wanted to do this kind of thing as his own thing, and he realizes that the rules aren't geared for that. It's something that has to involve this process.
Okay.
Just one quick comment.
Okay.
Just, if we go through with this, when we go through with this, it's probably going to be the first land transfer of this nature since 1992, so.
So, that means it's set in precedence, and we can start with lots of land transfers?
Bring them to our attention.
Yeah, all the dumps. Yeah, all the dump dumps.
I think it's all in a bag.
Hey, tell Richie to come in. Tell Richie to come on in.
Okay.
Page 4.
Last item of the morning. Good morning, Melody Rowley, Director of Health and Social Services, and I have with me this morning Shelley Baxter, who's the new executive director for the Lassen Aurora Network, our local mental health peer support organization. We're here this morning asking you to. Enjoy the proclamation in support of the National Recovery Month. The proclamation says that behavioral health is an essential part of everyone's overall health and wellness. Prevention of mental illness and substance use disorders works. Treatment is effective, and people recover in Lassen County and around the country all the time. Preventing and overcoming mental illness and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Family and friends of people with mental health and their substance use disorders are encouraged to implement prevention measures. Recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need of appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And according to the National Survey on Drug Use and Health in 2012, 2.5 million people above the age of 11 received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder, and 34.1 million adults over the age of 18 received mental health services. The difference in the ages there is that at 12, you can actually go to mental health department to receive mental health services without your parents' authorization.
Is that, I'm very often?
Not a lot. Usually, usually kids show up and their parents are aware, but sometimes they come. And sometimes it's because they need mental health because of the situation. And then where as to help people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMSA, and the White House Office on National Drug Control Policy, and the Lassen County Behavioral Health Department invite everyone to join the Voices for Recovery, visible, vocal, and valuable. The Board of Supervisors of the county of Lassen, we're asking you to proclaim that September 2015 is National Recovery Month, and recalling upon the residents of the county to observe this month by taking part in appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. And there's some information in the packets that Shelley handed out, and I have some more here for the public, if you'd like. We're having our stakeholder meetings in the month of September. The dates are on there, and the times we invite anyone and everyone to attend, and we also have some information that came from the Each My Matters website, California's campaign for behavioral health awareness. You happy to answer any questions or provide any other information you need?
So, it's a meeting, now you're just going to be this open office program services?
We're, we're seeking input from the public about what they see as needs, and we're also providing information to the public about what we're.
That is too far.
Yeah, one of the things we're really excited about is that, you know, we're a small department in, under the Affordable Care Act, behavioral health has received, has received a considerable amount of attention, and across the country, we don't, like medical providers, we don't really have the capacity to serve the need. A lot more people need our services than we have the ability to provide services for. So, we have kind of embarked on a campaign to help educate the community about behavioral health issues, and what they can do to help respond, so that people get funneled to services as quickly as possible, so that prevention services become more widely available, and so that everyone's prepared to help their community step up and take a part in this. So, we are providing mental health first aid training. It's a course that you can go through, it's a couple of days. It gets announced out there, anyone who would like to participate is welcome. We're also providing assist training, which is a suicide prevention training, and it's amazing how many people go through the training, go, wow, I didn't realize that I could actually talk to someone who's expressing suicidal ideations, it'd be helpful. Because a lot of them are afraid to touch it for fear it'll make them go out and act on their ideations, and, and really, it's been very helpful to a lot of people. In addition, we're bringing some more training to the community that has, that impacts behavioral health in a lot of places. People living in poverty experience behavioral health disorders at a much higher rate than those of us who are living in lower, in, in middle-class or upper-class lifestyles. It's there, but not to the extent that it's, there's a lot of stress with that in poverty. So, we're bringing Bridges Out of Poverty and an introduction to the roots of poverty here to the communities sometime, I'm hoping, after the first of the year. And we've got a couple of other things going on that we'll be announcing in the coming months that really help raise the awareness in the community about these issues.
Christian, yeah? Well, I just, I want to add to, and also in addition to Aaron's question, and then working with the Behavioral Health Board and serving on that, that next Monday evening is the next meeting, and if any board member is interested, it's really quite a dynamic group too, and I really appreciate it, being a part of that in the last couple, two, three years. But the stakeholder meetings are knowing that a chance to kind of, you know, educate and outline and inform, you know, constituencies out there of the services that are available, but it's also a great opportunity to learn from them where gaps might exist and what needs, you know, basically, you can vet, not that they're going to instantly be resolved, but, you know, the way the, the plans are put together, the mental health plans, the behavioral health plans that are required under state law for the utilization of the various funds, those sessions are very much a critical part of how you structure, you know, what would be the long-term utilization. So, if you want to, if you have a need over here and not one over there, and you've got assets here, you might re-outfit them in that respect, so it gives you a lot of give, give and take. And in my experience, I mean, at least the last few years with the program, and especially with the outlining areas, is that they have been very good at coming to the forefront in terms of identifying, I mean, it's not just with the family resource centers, but throughout the rest of the community, and have given input, and I think we've seen a real evolution of our services, being able to respond to those kind of needs. So, if you have the opportunity of attending one of those stakeholder meetings during the month, not having it all tied together and packaged under kind of a big focus like this is kind of huge, so, that's a, it's a one of, it's a really good program.
And we're going to continue to evolve as more information comes along.
And one of the things, and it gets lost sometimes in the shuffle of the discussions, and I really appreciate Shelley being here, and her predecessors even before that, but the Lassen Aurora Network is a consumer-based, organized, and run-in operation. It's like, you talk, it's really ultimately of the people, by the people, for the people, kind of an organization. And that was something that kind of evolved back when Kevin Manell was here, and really worked to foster, you know, the creation of this group, and it, we've got national recognition. In fact, one of these blocks around here somewhere was gained because of the creation of and the functioning of Lassen Aurora Network within the community, and it, you know, they, they really have a partner with the county. I mean, it really has made county services, I think, that much more dynamic, right, because the hardest part, especially in the mental health area, is getting people to engage and seek treatment and stuff, that, the barriers and the stigmas that are there, and they've done a lot to break down, you know, a lot of those kind of barriers, and I think that's something that needs to be continually recognized, and it's huge. And I know one of the behavioral health meetings that we attended, it's been a couple of years ago now, we, as a group got to, we got to be part of a group, where they actually, you know, did their thing, and it was like, wow, that was pretty interesting, we learned up a lot of things as a result. Anyway, I think it's something that should be celebrated as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, no more questions, I have a motion to approve the document.
I'll make the motion. Paul's here.
Post your second, the discussion, you've done it all up there.
Aye.
Hope you know that I've had it. Page six.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, two items. One, we had tentatively planned next week's meeting to be in Big Valley, in order to accommodate MoDOT County supervisors and their participation in the MoDOT Lassen Flood Control District. We did that at their request. Subsequently, they've indicated that none of their supervisors will be able to attend next Tuesday. So, I have directed a clerk to agendize the entire meeting here for next week, and then sometime in, hopefully in October, when the MoDOT county people can meet with us, we'll do.
Entire meeting of the board of supervisors?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have the entire meeting of the board of supervisors up in Big Valley. That was one thing. The second is.
Are you going to let them?
Uh, yes, I think we'll, we'll let them, we'll give them our schedule and let them do it, which is pretty much what we did here, and then they changed their mind, but, they have budget hearings, I guess, scheduled on next Tuesday, that they scheduled after we scheduled the meeting. The other item is that the chairman and I will be going to the title company this afternoon at 2:00 to execute the final documents on our 2950 reserve site, so, pre-property should transfer into county ownership by the end of the week, so, that's an exciting thing. Other than that, I have nothing.
Yes, thank you. See you next time.